I have a contract these to match what we saw on the screen as far as price.
That is up to the council if they wanted, if you wanted to entertain something like that.
Well, the window's still open. If Waste Pro or Waste Connection said we want to match their price.
Yeah, that is up to the council. If you want to give the applicant, or using my zoning terminology, if you want to give the contractors an opportunity to address council regarding the proposals that they submitted and give them an opportunity to make any modifications, that would be the council's decision. But I think, I think you would have the opportunity to do that if you so choose.
I would, Mr. Mayor, recommend a motion that we do for both of the Waste Pro and Waste Connection that go a final bid to the town. The motion's on the table.
Are they going to be making a presentation?
It's not, it's not part of, so, it's part of staff's process that explains this information to you. We have not contemplated any contractor presentations and we've not given them any indication that it would occur. I'm just saying if the council wishes to have them address you and talk about rates or services or anything related to their companies, I think you'd legally have the right to allow them to do that. But you are not required to do so.
They, Gary, they did it last time. Each of the companies came up with their presentations. So I don't need to tell you if that's, that's still turning on.
The process that we've undertaken has actually been a complete contract negotiation between these two final bidders with, I'm gonna call it open kimono. They have seen each other's numbers throughout this entire process. The goal of this evening was to actually come with executed contracts, well not executed, but completed contracts that both parties have seen going back and forth. So they'd see each other's numbers and bring to the council a document, a contract for signature. We have beaten these guys up pretty good over the last month and they have been incredibly professional in a very tight thought process. So, and the town staff has worked hard to make sure that everybody has given the town their best offer. We don't want to keep going better, 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 better. We want the best and I think the process we've done through got us to best tonight.
I just want to, I just want to add that, and what you're saying is true, but I recall a couple of weeks ago and asked that question and they said yes, they can, up until we make the decision, have that right to match an offer. So that's why I'm presenting that to be fair to the town of Indian Trail because let me get a better price.
Absolutely. And I did mean, I did not mean to suggest that we speak tonight, absolutely.
Okay, and that's why, and that's why I'm putting that to the council to say, you know what? Give them the opportunity if they want it, if theirs. If they don't want it, then we just move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cullen, one second, Mark.
I don't have a problem with somebody matching an offer. I do, the question's worded wrong because really there's only one company that can match an offer, not two. Because one company's higher, one's lower than the other one. So if you're gonna match an offer, the lower company's the only one that can match it. So, and I... The higher company, the higher company can only match the lower company. Now, I don't have a problem with that. If Waste Pro wants to get up and do that, that's... If they want to do a presentation and do that, or just stand up and say they want to do it, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that. Wyman?
Yeah, I would just like to just seek some clarification. From my understanding, the current contract requires us to make a decision within 90 days of the termination of, or 90 days before the end of the contract, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So if we're going to, and I heard Mr. Cohen say that, you know, maybe we can have him stand up now. And if we delay this contract or delay this process, I just want to make sure that we're not gonna find ourselves in a contractual situation by not meeting our obligation to make a decision within that 90-day period.
I would just like to add to Mr. Warren's point that that is very important for a, and I'm not trying to, yeah, the council needs to make some decisions, but from the staff's perspective is, and from a service perspective, is incredibly important for the council to make a final decision regarding the solid base contractor. If you look at the, one of the appendices in the contract was the implementation schedule for Waste Connections. You know, Waste Pro's existing vendor, there's no implementation for them. But if there is, if Waste Connections were to be chosen as the new contractor, they need as much time as possible to get geared up. And so we've been complimenting to Mr. Warren said that our contract provisions, where we have timelines, we have to agree to prevent change. So it's very important that we make a decision tonight. Yes, sir?
A couple of questions. So basically what we're saying is if, let's say they said they would match the offer. Are you saying that, that we can't do that tonight because there's paperwork that needs to be done involved in that? Or not?
We could, if they come up with a term that's easy enough to amend to the contract and you all accept, that would, it would not be a long-term process that could be done. You can make a decision.
So it could be as simple as somebody's to stand up and say, and I'm not even sure they'd want to do it anyway. So if they would, so, I have several other questions. I answered, thank you. Several, several other questions. With our current rate, what is the difference in the new rate and our current rate? Rox? Are we, are we actually saving money from our, from our past, from our...
We are, so...
How much, Rox, do you have, Mark?
Okay, so, I don't have percentages, but I do have numbers.
Numbers are fine.
All right, good. So what we previously reported to the council is based on our current rate structure over the past, roughly over the past 12 calendar months, we spent about 1.68 million per year. And so if we were to examine the Waste Connections proposal, that would change to 1.54 million. And if we looked at the updated Waste Pro proposal, we would change it to 1.56. So you do have a significant amount of savings. So 1.68 current, with Waste Connections 1.54, with the proposed Waste Pro rate 1.56.
All right, next question. Just on the termination part, when you were talking about the termination, just to make sure, it just, it sounded odd to me that when you had, there's, we can terminate without, just want to make sure, we can terminate at any time without penalty. Is that...
Yes, that's correct. So the only, the only proviso with the Waste Connections, if it's terminating for CAU, or for, someone comes in and, hey, we're making a much better deal, they have the right to be able to match that, that rate. But if we don't like, you know, whatever, if we don't like your customer service, we can terminate.
Okay, that I understood. So, which I, I think, good. I think that, that answers all my questions.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions. So Rox, a couple of questions, I've got about three questions. The first one is, if I understood you correctly, it's a $93,000 difference. Is that per year or over the five-year term?
Five years.
That's over the five-year term.
Okay. Does that also, $93,000 difference, does that include the DSO fuel charge?
No, that does not. That's just based on projecting the proposed core rates. So it does not take into account if there are fuel surcharges were to be assessed.
Okay. We currently receive fuel surcharge as part of our invoices?
Not at present.
Okay. And you've talked about the increase in the taxes and fees where there's distinctions in the contracts where Waste Connections said service rate may increase with any increases in taxes where Waste Pro does not. Do we have a history, know of a history of where there were increases in taxes and fees under the current contract?
I'm unaware of any.
Okay. Final question is, when we talk about allowing a company to come up to match, so if we say Waste Pro, can you come up and maybe you want to match the offer, contractually and legally, do we have to also allow Waste Connections to equally come up to say, well, we're gonna make a competitive offer, a counteroffer to that? Because, and why I ask this question is, I don't know if we want to find ourselves in a situation, Mr. Mayor, where we could be in a competitive bid war during a council meeting. I know that we've gone through a very rigorous process, Rox, and you and the staff have done a really good job at that. And I know your attorney has also equally done a very good job of making sure that this has been a very competitive process. So, so the question is, if we allow one company to come up, then do we have to equally allow the other company to come up?
Yes. Yes, we would. It would. The way that this process has worked, it has literally been practically like an online auction. They have had access to each other's numbers, to each other's contract terms throughout the entire process. So the online auction has been going on since March. We do have, we did have a closed date. But again, there is nothing from the staff perspective. We did say we're done, the auction is closed. But the council certainly has the right to listen and the bidders have the right to make proposals. And regardless of what they propose, the council has the right to pick whoever they want after they've heard from everybody, so.
Rox, just one question. Are you comfortable with what Karen says there with the rigour that they had a hard fought battle and the work to get the lowest service and lowest number done?
We are, yeah, we staff, I can speak for the staff project team. I think we are very comfortable with the rates that had come in from both finalists. Like her with, I think Ms. Porter said, that it was a very vigorous process. We had a lot of back and forth, an incredible amount of transparency and to the disappointment of some, of some contractors as well. And so I think there have, I think that the best, and the best offers have been put forth. I can't speak for what the contractors might say if they come up here for one last time, but they have had ample opportunities to put forth their most competitive offer.
Yeah, this is the final question. I stated earlier that I didn't have a problem with it. And the more I've sat here, I've talked, you've basically made your statement and I've listened to the attorney about, they've had ample time to go back and forth, to go back and forth. And the more I think about it is I'm comfortable with the way it is, simply because of what you two said. And you have, you have brought me to believe that you know more about this contract than I do and you both worked very hard on it. So I just, I want to make that for the record that I'm more comfortable just leaving it like it is. So that's just my point.
Quick question. So Rox, this is not a low bid contract, right? It's a service contract, just to make that known also?
It is correct.
There is a motion on the table to allow further matching of the contract price to Mr. Daniels. And one thing with Mr. Daniels' motion, opposed? Which way are you, Mr. Wyman?
Tell me who's coming, so I'll hear if you're up or down.
Up or down?
Yeah, you got that. Who was opposed and who was opposed to the events and who was for? Let the record stand that Mr. Daniels and Mr. Savoy were for, Mr. Savoy abstained, which results to a yes vote. And Ms. Howe, Mr. Cohen, and Mr. Wyman are against. Mr. Daniels' motion fails. Council, do you have a decision to make on a Waste contract? I will allow for each council member to make one statement before a motion's made, if that so chooses. Mr. Savoy, do you have anything to say?
Sure. So as Rox has mentioned, this, this isn't a low bid contract. It's about service. And, you know, Waste Pro has provided, I think, in my opinion, excellent service in this town. Not only that, but, you know, they, they've proven to make this town their own with leaders living in this town. Not only that, but with our last contract, we had Waste Pro build a $3 million-plus facility within this time, within this town. And, you know, we're always saying that we want to decrease the residential tax burden and increase the, or get more businesses to come in. And they've done that and stepped up. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, every time that they, you've asked for money for something, they've stepped up to the table and provided it. And, that's all right, I'll defer. And I know they are, you know, they, they have their name on the concession stand. So again, I think this is about service. We have a known commodity in this town that has excellent service. And with prices being so close and lower than what we paid for last year, I personally don't see a reason why we just don't continue the contract.
Very good points. The last point being that we do have a lower contract now than we did before. And I think a large part of that is because of the bidding process, we have a lower, we have a lower price. The bidding process has brought our prices substantially down. And I think we can thank a competitor for coming in and putting in those prices. I'm looking at this a little bit differently. I think Waste Pro did do a good job. I've been on council for five years. And five years ago, Waste Pro came in and made a bid and I was in that contract negotiation, or I was here when the town manager and stated that Waste Pro was the lowest bidder on the contract. Going back and looking at that contract, Waste Pro was the second highest bidder. So I never did really understand how that, how that came through. I didn't quite, I didn't quite get that. But anyway, that's what started the process. Also looking back, we had a council person that was on council at the time that voted for the Waste Pro contract. Also, he was the one that made the motion to accept Waste Pro. And then he accepted a job with Waste Pro while working on council, still on council. And it just didn't pass the smell test with me. After the council voted on the contract, assuming it was the lowest bidder, okay, and I, a city council member, you know, still did that, it was, it was the same council member who made the motion. And during the bid process, on the first bid, this bid that we're doing now, Waste Pro's was about $1 million, $900,000 higher than Waste Connections. And I kind of relate that to going and buying a car, or just me personally. If I were going out to buy Mercedes Benz and I went to dealership A and they were gonna charge me $100,000 for a car, and I went to dealership B and they were gonna charge me $75,000 for exactly the same car, and then this particular company finds out that this company's gonna sell it to me for $75,000, they call me back and say, well, I'll, I'll sell you that car for $75,000. I'm probably gonna go with the company that sold me that first time at $75,000. And that's just, to me, good, good business practices. Another thing that really bothers me, and I think it's time for the town to get away from the reputation of doing business, just not, not passing the smell test. And another thing that bothers me is when we were in our meetings a while back, we were discussing the, the two companies and some false information was put out there on one particular company, saying that, that they were not allowed to bid in certain towns. And a particular council person said it. And those, those facts just weren't true. Now, I don't believe that council person lied. I really don't. I believe he was told that. But he wasn't told that by the towns that, that actually was said to have complained about the other garbage companies. So I really don't know who that information came from. But I can only assume that it came from one of the garbage companies, which to me, it doesn't pass the smell test. With all this being said, when I do business, or what I'm basically looking to do is look out for the, for the citizens of the town. And I want to do business with somebody that I, that's completely, and just in my mind, straight up with what we're doing. And I, I, I think Waste Pro did a good job. I think they did a good job. But all the things that went with it, I'm not real comfortable, I'm just not real comfortable with Waste Pro right now. And I'm just gonna say right now, I would favor Waste Connections.
Yes. Mary Alvarez, you received an email from the county commissioner about the dumping fees, $400,000.
I was forwarded the email. I didn't receive it initially.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, I was forwarded that. It was already a conversation taking place. I believe Mr. Wyman had responded to the county commissioner.
Can anyone give an explanation as to the information in here about the $430,000 dumping fees?
The, what the commissioner was trying to say?
Correct.
Being that Waste Pro uses the county facility, it brings revenue and, and revenue to the county as a whole and eases the tax burden spread out through the whole county of every resident in the town because the county's transport facility is being used by Waste Pro. Waste Connections does not use the county facility, goes directly to theirs, bypassing the county, which leaves a hole in the county's budget for that additional $400,000, again, spread throughout the whole county and tax burden on each individual home. And they were pleading that we would go with the one that we use, the county transfer facility, which in turn will help the county possibly help Indian Trail. I don't know what the fee would be for a resident, if you divided that amongst some $200,000. But that was just a little bit support. He was shaking his head.
Oh, no, my head's just shaking. I agree.
I'd like to add something to that also. Well, I was gonna answer what you were saying. Answered the email that another question was asked, would it be any guarantee that the dumping fees would fix? And the dumping fee is based on the quantity of what's being dumped. And given that with Union County getting 43 people a day moving in, this is gonna equate to 16,000 people a year, one would have to guess that it's gonna be used more. So that fee would go down because of quantity of the, of the garbage.
That's not true. That's not necessary.
It's not true at all. That's just not true.
Well, that was the explanation that was given. And that's, they took that out of the... That was in a further email, yes.
I think that was undue influence on the council here, or the people that were, the employees that were working on this. I think this came in and made a difference. And that bothers me that they did that. They're looking after Union County, but I'm looking after Indian Trail. And I know it is encompass all the towns here in Union County. Well, the other thing I liked was with Waste Connections, they're getting new trucks. And I know some of my friends have, that some of their streets where everything just ran out and it was smelling, it was bad. And he just went out for a while and then I think Waste Pro got some new trucks and then I discussed the dumping fee. I just feel that as far as the timeline is going back and what this, the thing, the thing that I can feel, and it is a game, well, I think that's not necessary. They've worked hard. She's got, there's, I've got, that's one contract there for one company. I mean, there's pages and pages. And they were very diligently working on this to try to get it resolved and for us to vote tonight. So as far as I'm concerned, I would make a good choice to match the contract.
I just have a, before I go in, I just have one question. And I agree with what you said about Council McCollum. Something about, like, you know, we need to look into it. But you mentioned something about even on a council of five years. And my only question to you is that why didn't you look into it for those five years of how you felt tonight about that phone question? You had five years to look into it. But to me, did you? You go on a council of five years...
He asked me a question. So I, I don't understand the question. I had five years to look into one.
To look into the allegation you just made tonight about, about what you felt about Waste Pro.
Personally, I don't think there was anything illegal about it. There was nothing I could do about it. But it certainly didn't pass the smell test.
Well, did you ever bring it up on council and say, hey?
Oh, we talked about it. I've talked about it. I can't get into a discussion.
All right. Well, that was part of my statement. The other part of the statement is, how many people you, how many people have seen the movie Hidden Figures, life movies? One of the things, I've been in business for 30 years and I've looked at media financial statements, negotiated a lot of businesses. And people say, well, why did you pick this business over the other business? You know, the numbers are out there just overwhelmingly. And I always say, well, sometimes the numbers that you see that will get you in trouble, it's the numbers that you don't see that will, that you make the difference between why does a business continue and why does a business fail? Now, we're looking at a difference of about $16,000 a year and over five years, that's a lot of money. But the numbers that you don't see is that Waste Pro has a facility that they employ people of Indian Trail. I would imagine at least three or more. So now you're gonna say, three people of Indian Trail that have a job are not gonna have a job. Okay, that life happens. But that's the, another unseen number that you're not seeing, that you now have a chance to continue those jobs. Or if Waste Connections say, hey, we're gonna employ those people, fine. The other thing is that we're getting property tax on that property. We don't know what's gonna happen to it now. Perhaps it'll be used by Monroe, hopefully. We also have a, one of the executives lives here in Indian Trail. So if there's a problem, he or she will pick up the phone and say, hey, you don't need to fix this. Another unseen number is that, the mayor will talk about this in a little bit. I've been at, I've been at functions where we needed a, we needed water. We needed a facility that was given to us by Waste Pro like no problem. I'm the type of person that I don't, I listen to people because people always have something to say you can learn. But I went to the city of Monroe and I spoke to Billy Jordan, the town council, and they've had Waste Connections, they had Waste Pro. And I spoke to the, to the planning lady, Lisa Sidmore, and asked, why didn't you go in a different direction? She liked both companies. And it was a continuation of the contract. And they said, you're familiar with the service. They know your terrain. You always have a learning curve with a new, a new company coming in, not missing neighborhoods, missing blocks, missing community. And it's a learning curve. Basically, all Waste companies are the same. They have trucks, they get old, they're gonna leave. New trucks will get old and you're gonna have a problem. I always say, and I asked Billy Jordan, why didn't you continue the contract with Waste Pro? And he told me, he says, Gordon, he says, they're comfortable, they do a good job, you have a good relationship, they invested in your community, and you continue with them. He says, unless there's a big mess up, you change. And one of the things I learned is that if you take the calls coming in about complaints, he said, our complaints, in the beginning, it's always gonna be high, but they get lower and lower and lower. He says, it puts less strain on your, on your, on your town, less strain on your town hall because people are happy to not complain. He says, so we went with them. So, and I've been, I've been in my neighborhood since '05 and I'm happy with the, with the waste service that I'm receiving. And I'm happy with the fact that Waste Pro has stepped up and every time the mayor has asked for help, they've been there. Fact that they're employing people here, fact that they're paying property taxes here. Fact that they're employing people here, fact that they're paying property taxes here, those are the things that we have to consider and not just look at $16,000, because in salaries, one person's making more than $16,000. So a lot of times, you know, if you want to... If you're going to be in a cold, cruel world and say, look at the numbers, hey, speaks for service, can't fight the numbers. But let's look at the hidden things that mean something to people, it means something to a town. And getting that, and just talking with other people in other towns, I'd rather go with a known quantity, and I would stick with Waste Pro, and that's my vote.
Mr. Wyman, did you want to add a quick comment?
Sure, thank you. So, definitely good points. But that I definitely look at is, the numbers are pretty close in comparison, and I started looking at other aspects of both of the companies. And with Waste Pro, we got a little bit of a history, as Mr. Cohen was alluding to, and we've seen the media reports on some of the questionable activities, we're acting the Waste Pro contract from 2012. I've actually had the opportunity to sit down with town staff through all the bidding process and period. And there's a lot of concern there in the way that that particular contract was originally awarded as it relates to some of the misinformation that was provided. Now, I'm not saying that this is necessarily Waste Pro's issue. We actually had town staff that told council and the public that Waste Pro was in fact the lowest bidder, which, if you look at... Look at both the contracts and the numbers at that period of time, and the amount that we paid since then, we definitely know that that's not the... Wasn't the lowest bidder. So we started out the gate in 2012 with some misinformation. We get into this particular contract period, now we've got some other questionable activities that have occurred. We've got some misinformation that was... I'm counsel to town staff about the Waste Connections in particular, and some of the bidding misinformation that was given in the way, and the service and other municipalities. We've had... Which was... There was some interjection kind of behind the scenes in an attempt to potentially sway council one way or another in favor of a particular company. We then have the commissioner that made in, basically trying to say that we have, you know, $4,000, basically trying to use this character to people to say that any government that's been suffering impacted service by the recycling facilities if we don't go with Waste Pro. That really bothers me. And I deal with $100 million contracts on a quarterly basis. You know, trust factor is very important when you're dealing with numbers like that, and the impact that those particular services could have. And the trust factor that you want to make sure that you instill from the relationship and the partnership that you have with a particular company that you're entrusting your services to. Granted, Waste Pro has provided some donations, and they, you know, and Waste Connections have done that as well. I mean, it's...